Call this meeting in order, welcome everyone. Please excuse our technical difficulties. I'm sure we will have more of these throughout the night. Please bear with us, this is a pretty challenging being that this is the first time that we're trying this. Just be patient and we'll be patient with you. So with that, I will, actually, I'm gonna have to formally ask our council members if they're present. So I'm gonna call your name and just yell whether you're here or not, so we can have that for the record. Councilman Ron Smith?
He's having trouble.
Councilman Ron? Here, Councilman John Booth. Councilman John Booth? John is gonna be out for a little while and may join us later. Councilman Rodney?
Here.
Councilman Ian? Councilman Ian? We'll skip Ian, we'll go with Councilman Rick?
Yes, here.
Councilman Troy?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Ian, I'm here.
Okay. Councilman Troy? Councilwoman Diamond? Diamond, Troy. I see your pictures. Alright, please bear with us while we try to clean that part up. Councilman Troy?
I'm here. I'm here.
I'm here.
Can everyone hear me? Alright, so we're gonna go to, actually, we're gonna have to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Nope, actually, we're gonna agenda adoption, I'm sorry. We're gonna go to agenda adoption. So if you're gonna make a motion, please state your name prior to the motion, and the same with the second, so we can move similarly throughout the night. I undertake a motion to adopt the agenda, or if there's any agenda change, just speak now.
Second, Mayor.
We got a motion on the floor, probably a second. Who made the motion? I didn't hear that.
Troy.
Mr. Troy. Alright, now, we're gonna do this again, in the same order that I called you out earlier. I'm gonna go down, just say yes or no, and we'll move forward. Ron?
I think he's having trouble hearing you, Mayor, in speaking.
Alright, got it. We're gonna keep going, Councilman Rodney, yea or nay?
Yea.
Councilman Ian?
Yea.
Councilman Rick?
Here.
Councilman Troy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond? Councilwoman Diamond? Oh, okay, we got a signal. Councilman Ron? Ron, assuming you're gonna go yes on the agenda adoption. Alright, we're gonna skip to the Pledge of Allegiance, just because we have to, because it is on the agenda. So if you can bear with us a second, we're gonna go through that. Are you ready? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we're gonna go to public comment. We do have one person that signed up formally, and I'll let Town Manager Haynes go ahead and give us the name of that person.
Got audio on me?
Yep.
Okay, alright. Wanted to discuss here, public comment for this meeting tonight. We gave the public the opportunity to submit both an email or voicemail prior to tonight's meeting if they had any public comment. Those are just general comments that they would like to address to the council. We did not receive any emails or voicemails for public comment. I do wanna go ahead and reiterate that as we move through the meeting tonight, we will follow our normal business meeting practices, and rules and procedures will apply to that. I know that there are a lot of people interested in the public hearing that will be discussed later on, and we've also given folks an opportunity to respond via voicemail and email for their comments to be read aloud and considered part of the minutes of the meeting for that. So bear with us as we're working through this. We obviously are having some issues with our audio at this time and some feedback. What I can suggest everyone that will make this easier for us all is if you are not a member of the council, please put your audio devices or your computer devices on mute at this time. That'll give the council members the opportunity to work through business cleanly, and then when we get to the public discussion portions of the meeting, we'll open those up and we'll do our best to sort through and make sure everyone's voices and comments are heard. But if everyone could just take a moment and go ahead and mute their devices on their end. If you're using the Zoom web audio platform, if you use your mouse and hover over the screen, in the bottom-left corner, there's a mute and unmute button. And if you're on your phone and joining us by your cellphone, just mute your cellphone, and that should help us out a lot as we start to open up these audio devices. It looks like we have about 66 members joining us tonight, which is fantastic. We're excited to see that public participation in the meeting tonight, but just bear with us as we work through these audio issues, and it'll help everyone out and help us move along if we can get everyone to mute their devices until allowed to speak. Thank you. Alright, I'll go ahead and also alert the council members. Some of you have both your tablet or laptop or iPad devices, as well as your phone, that you're utilizing those two sources. So make sure if you're using your phone, that you mute your computer. So just go ahead and mute that volume on your computer, that'll help with some of the feedback as well. So with that, Mayor, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment. If we want to open this up right now to the public, we'll let James unmute everyone. And like I said, we'll do our very best to sort through individuals if anyone has any comment. But this is just general comments.
Anything related to the items. Open it up now. The public is gonna help us out tremendously if you put your devices on mute.
Doing better. So if you're in the Zoom session, you wanna use the chat? You wanna speak more in public comment, we can go with that? First. Alright, hearing, I'm not seeing any, let's open it up to public comment. Mute yourself, make your name and address for the record. We're not worried, we'll move past comments and go to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before we get there, can we make sure that all the council members are ready to listen? I don't think Ron is able to come off of me. Ron, are you on?
On. I'm on.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. We do have quite a few members of the public who have not muted their end of their devices. In order for us to be effective in this, can we remove those individuals from the meeting?
Okay.
So, members of the public, it is very important that you mute your devices on your end. We understand that the host can mute everyone, but we have 66 members here, and so it's very difficult to manage all of those people coming and going.
Alright, we're gonna move to consent agenda. I undertake a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, Troy.
I'll be seconded. All they were saying, actually, I can't, sorry.
Rick.
Councilman Ron.
Rick made the motion.
Councilman John.
Troy.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Rick?
Yes.
Councilman Troy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, moving to Town Manager's public report. Everybody gonna go back on views while we listen to Hags.
Alright, guys, I'm gonna keep the Town Manager's report very simple this evening, just to move along and for the processes where they're using tonight.
The main thing that I wanted to address with the staff, the citizens and the council is that everyone understands we're still open for business, that operations of the town continue as normal, with very little noticeable decrease in that service delivery. And so we want to make sure that even though our facilities are closed, our citizens know that we're here to answer any of their needs, any of their questions, via phone, via email, whatever ways that you can get in touch with us. We're there for business, it's still continuing. Our employees are still working, close to regular schedules. And so, we just wanna make sure everyone is aware of that.
Also, want to just, again, ask for patience through this process. Again, the same meetings that apply to most meetings will apply for this meeting tonight. And again, just ask for patience with everyone, so thank you.
They're not able to hear me.
Yeah, can you hear me? Alright, sorry about that. So just real quick, can you hear me now? Everybody good?
Yes.
Alright, so, wow, I already said it, so I'm gonna say it again. So the only thing I have is for us to be, and this is for staff and council, to be thinking about ways that we can help our local businesses in the next 60 days when we come out of this that we're in, and hopefully be able to support them and get them back thriving again, whether it's relaxing our signed ordinances, posting a business a day on our website, our Facebook page, whatever media outlets we can do. So I think we should be thinking about that as we head into the next 60 days, and what we're gonna do to get them back on their feet. So with that, I'll open it up to council for any open comments for them. I can go down the list, I'll go with Councilman Ron?
I'm good.
Councilman Rodney?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff. I know it's been a hard time the last month with new ordinances about emergency and having to work from home, and we just appreciate what they have done and are continuing to do.
Thank you, Rodney.
Councilman Ian?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just important that we look at ways to support our local businesses. I will say that, from where I sit, it looks like the community has really come together to try to support especially the restaurant businesses that can't have any patrons inside. So for any of you that are on the call, just know that I see that support, and I think it's really helpful to all those businesses. I think we should continue to do those things.
Councilman Rick?
Yeah, I just think we might wanna take anything under consideration that the businesses have for us, or what they might need, and then we can discuss what we can do when it opens back up. But they might know more than any one of us what they really need, and we can assist them in any way we can.
And we are connected with HBA, and I already posed that question, but just threw that out there, it's gonna happen in all different directions. Hopefully, we'll come up with a solution that we all can do. Councilman Troy?
Yeah, I'm fine. I think everybody's faring through this as well as they can, and we just ask for patience as this meeting goes on.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I wanna reiterate that thank you for the town staff and everyone who's out here working very hard in our community to make sure everyone has what they need. I also wanna send a big thank you to our first responders. I know it's been a little rough for them in trying to help navigate different things, especially after the storm last night. I know it was a huge undertaking to get some things done. I also wanna tell everyone that youth council will be meeting on the 21st, and we'll be doing a virtual meeting, and we'll be talking about the DARE program, so the drug adverse program for many students in our community. And I think it's gonna be timely, especially since a lot of them are out of school right now.
Thank you for that. So with that, if there are no other comments, we will move to the first, the public hearing. I'll turn it back over to staff.
Alright, the way that we will work through this tonight is our planning and economic development director, Sushil Nepal, is getting ready to take over the meeting. So we will have a PowerPoint that everyone here on the Zoom platform will be able to see. We'll process through the staff presentation of the application for the rezoning. We'll answer any questions that council members may have. They'll open up the public hearing. At that point, we will collect public comment from individuals and close the public hearing and move forward from there. So just give everyone a heads up of how this process will go. Again, we do have some emails and voicemails that have come in via the channels that we offer the public during this time that may not be able to be present here with us this evening. We'll make sure those are read aloud and included in part of the minutes of the meeting, and then we'll do our best to open it up to everybody to make their own comments. So we'll just have to be patient with us, and we'll have to sort of raise our hand and take our turn, and we wanna make sure we hear from everybody through this process. So with that, we'll turn it over to Sushil Nepal with our planning department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me well? Okay, the first public hearing on the agenda tonight is to consider rezoning for property 7800 Robinson Church Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property at the corner of Tom Quarry and Robinson Church Road. The total acreage for this parcel is 32.85 acres. Again, the goal here from the applicant is to develop the site into 77 age-restricted single-family homes. If you recall, we had a proposal last year for the same property. So this is a different applicant, different product type that is in front of you for consideration. Last time, it was traditional, single-family homes. This is not a traditional, but restricted to 50-plus age group community. The property is currently in the rezoning, and will need to be annexed. There is annexation on the agenda after this public hearing. Depending on the decision of the rezoning request, we'll get into that next. The current rezoning on the property is RE, rural state. Applicant is requesting it rezoned to conditional residential villas. Here's a map of the property on your screen. You can see Tom Quarry Road and Robinson Church. I'll try to use my pointer, so there's a property in question. You can see Tom Quarry Road, Robinson Church Road, it's right at the intersection. What you see on the screen is the rezoning site plan that staff has worked with applicant. It was included in your packet where you could, you probably were able to see it in more detail, but I'll try to go through some of the highlights. So one of the comments we heard, not only during this part of the rezoning, but when we heard the rezoning last year, there was a lot of concerns from our neighbors at Fenton Dell about the buffer issues. I think through this process, we have been able to resolve that. There is a 20-foot buffer along Fenton Dell. Some of the existing trees save, some of the existing trees will be saved. And then there is additional 10-foot landscape easement. So there will be 30-foot buffer from this community to existing Fenton Dell neighborhood. There's also berm throughout Tom Quarry Road and Robinson Church. Through the project, we're able to get some greenway connected to the community. And also, if you recall, last time, there was this stub connecting to Fenton Dell. We had a road connection zone during the last proposal, but this, as part of this application, we are removing that recommendation and asking council to consider connecting with a 10-foot multi-use path to the community. As part of the proposal, there will also be pedestrian signal installed at Robinson Church Road where the greenway will come and end. There will be two entrances. The primary entrance, the full access, will be off of Robinson Church Road, and there will be a ride-in, ride-out coming off of Tom Quarry. If you recall, this was not the case in our past proposals. So this is much improved based on the feedback we received from the community and through the neighborhood meeting and also the planning board meeting, we received some positive feedback from the neighbors. The other component of this project is the intersection improvement at Tom Quarry and Robinson Church Road. There will be a three-way contribution. If you recall, during the stay-home rezoning, the gardens off of Stalling Street, we had 25 percent, that project was gonna contribute 25 percent towards this improvement. Town has some funding allocated for this, and then the remaining portion of whatever that cost is will be borne by this project. Here are some of the key numbers. Again, the current zoning is RE, residential rural estate. The proposed zoning for the parcel is conditional RV. 77 units, with that, it comes to 2.34 units per acre. The smallest lot size is 7,500 square feet. Again, for age-restricted community, that's pretty common. If you look at traditional versus age-restricted, typically, the lot sizes are on a smaller end. Here are some of the examples that the applicant provided. You'll see this more again when the applicant will give his presentation. But again, these are high-quality product that are in the neighboring community as well. We've negotiated that none of these homes will have vinyl siding, so there will be high-quality hardwood plank with brick and stone accents. Going back to, how does this fit with our land use plan? If you look on the map, the store where the property is, this is designated for our medium residential land use. So that means 2 to 3 units per acre. The proposal that's been presented for rezoning fits within that criteria that we had established. Again, here's just a definition of what that medium-density residential means and how that translates to residential villas zoning classification in our UDO. There's a lot of confusion in the community that just because it's RV, and RV has that 8-unit-per-acre designation, does not mean that this proposal is bringing 8-units-per-acre homes. The conditional RV, as part of this project, will be capped at 2.34 units. As you recall, as part of the conditional zoning, there is hardwood plant attached, and the number of units and the density is tied with that site plan. So once we approve 2.34 units per acre, the applicant, the land is tied to that unit. So you're not able to go more than that. Like with any rezoning, we looked at adequate public facilities. There are utilities, water sewer to serve the site. TIA was not required, given the age-restricted nature of the project. But again, as I indicated during my site plan preview, there are several transportation improvements that are coming out of this project for us as a town. Realignment of Tom Quarry at intersection of Robinson Church Road. The applicant will be contributing towards that. There are ride-away improvements, including turn lanes on both Tom Quarry entrance and also Robinson Church Road entrance. And like any property, we will be requiring sidewalks throughout the frontages of this property. Schools, because of the age-restricted nature, there's no impact to schools. And we have enough police fire service for this area. I will try to go through these conditions for rezoning. So the first one is your typical that applicant agrees to obtain all applicable local, state, federal permits. The second one is tied to the age-restricted nature of the community, 55-plus. The federal law requires that there is 80% minimum for 55 older, but the applicant, based on the planning board feedback, has agreed to increase that cap to 90%. So they're claiming that 90% of the homeowners in this area will be... Correct, 55 or older, and that will be through the deed restriction. So that will be, that... The third condition is to restrict the vinyl... The fourth condition is, again, it's shown on the site plan, construction of the 10-foot-wide paved greenway trail throughout the property and also connecting to the Fenton Dell neighborhood. There was some comment raised during the planning board meeting and also at the neighborhood meeting about adding some shrubs or planting next to the greenway going through the community. So we have added that note to the site plan, and once we get to the construction documents, those details will be flushed out as well. Applicant also agrees to install the pedestrian crosswalk and signal at the greenway crossing on Robinson Church Road. And again, the sixth point is the working together with town... And again, the sixth point is the working together with town staff and NC Department of Transportation to make all the road improvements, not only at the access points on Tom Quarry and Robinson Church Road, but also the realignment of the intersection. The last condition is applicant agrees to identify any potential tree-save areas and preserve as much heritage trees as we can through this process. We had held a neighborhood meeting on November 21st of last year. Planning board heard the presentation and recommended approval of the rezoning at their February 2020 meeting. With the conditions and with all the improvements that are presented on the site plan, staff is recommending that council consider approving the rezoning as proposed with the condition. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. The applicant will. Or I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Sushil, Ron Smith. I received several phone calls today. And could you please go back over, because it's come back up, the access to Bridge Point and the intentions of not connecting to Bridge Point and how all that plays together?
So you're talking about the realignment and how that goes to Bridge Point?
Correct. You guys have explained it in a way that, you know, there was a connectivity. The Bridge Point residents were concerned that they were going to be attached to Tom Query or the connector. And could you guys explain that a bit? So, because I have a feeling that's going to come up with some of our resident feedback tonight. I'd rather see if we could address it first.
Sure. So there is no intent as part of this project to connect to Bridge Point. So the project that is in front of you is only going to realign the Tom Quarry and the project limit is going to stop at Robinson Church Road. What you have seen in previous maps and previous planning documents is the intent of connecting Tom Quarry to whatever happens in that vacant area and that ultimately gets connected to Bridge Point. There was never an intent of taking a thorough through Bridge Point community. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, that does. And one other question is, will NC DOT be part of the road improvement of that intersection?
We are working with NC DOT at this point. There is no committed funding from NC DOT. It's basically the town, applicant here, and say homes are the three partners. But we will be working with NC DOT if there is any available funding to bring into the mix. At this point.
And that is just, and that's just a realignment, correct?
Realignment with signal.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
Sushil, this is Ian.
Can you hear me okay? Yep.
I can hear you well.
So I was looking at the site plan where there's the pedestrian crossing that you talked about. But the plan actually simply says possible pedestrian crossing. So has that been captured properly as a requirement?
Yes, there is mutual understanding. There is documented through email conversation. The only reason it says possible is because we were not sure what kind of pedestrian crossing it would be. But there is mutual understanding on both parties and we feel comfortable that way.
Can we add that as a condition? So we're going to add that as a condition even when we make the motion, if we make the motion.
Well, I think it is a condition. I'm just saying that the site, the site plan and the conditions are not necessarily in sync. And I'm just clarifying that item.
Yep.
Got it. So on the, go ahead, Sushil.
So we tried to capture as much as we can on the site plan and the conditions play a bigger role. Those conditions remain with the project. So whatever is more stringent, we look at that. So we're covered in this case with the conditions we have in place.
On the greenway connection to Tottenham Drive, it says that the planting is to be maintained by others. Who exactly are others and has that been?
That would be the town.
Agreed to.
Once the greenway is built, it will be transferred over to the town and the town maintains the greenway and will be maintaining that plantation as part of that.
You mentioned that the town will be sharing some of the funding for the realignment. Do you know how much the town has proposed? Or what's in our budget for that realignment? And do we have any idea what the actual cost of the realignment is and what share of that would go to the developer?
No. Last time we looked at this, and Rob can chime in to correct, but we were looking at total cost to be somewhere between 300,000 to 400,000. So 25% up to 100,000 is going to be from say homes. And I think our portion is similar to say homes, 25% are up to 100,000. And then remainder will be on the applicant. An applicant has agreed to that. We've communicated and we have email confirmation on that.
Bear with me, I just have two more. So you said you didn't feel that a TIA was necessary at this particular location. I do have some concerns about where Stallings and Veterans Park merge.
I'm sorry, let me clarify. It was not that I felt like the TIA ordinance requirements were not met because of the age-restricted community, the amount of trip it generates. It did not trigger our TIA. It was not my feeling. It was the ordinance not being triggered.
Okay. I do have some concerns about that intersection.
Which intersection?
Stallings and Veterans Park, or Veterans Bridge.
Well, there will be some improvement that will be done to that section as part of the say homes project. But what's your, or maybe we can talk offline and I can make you aware of what those improvements are.
Yeah, I'm aware of the improvements. We're just, it seems like we're compounding the issue with the Camellia Gardens and this project, all converging on that one artery into town.
Well, from a trip generation perspective, this project being age-restricted in nature and the age group that will be living in the community, it does not generate your peak hour traffic the same way as say homes will do. So we don't see the same concern. If it was a traditional, single-family home with the same number of units, then we would probably share some of the concern. But given the number of trips that will be generated and also that the community will be on the road at different times than your commuter traffic, I think we'll be seeing less impact.
Okay. I have a little worry about that. I'll just tell you a little story that, you know, my, one of my children was adopted. And before we adopted him, he was living with his grandparents who are 70 and older. But they were still taking him to school every day. And an age restriction of 55 and up, you know, many older folks are working today. So I do have some concerns with just blanket saying we're not going to kick into a TIA because we don't expect the trips. But that age group, I think, is changing very much. Those are my concerns with that. I'll move on to the last question. There was a comment in the neighborhood meeting regarding saving as many trees as possible. I see some heritage trees, but was there additional thought to other non-heritage trees?
What the hell is that mean? So the trees along Fenton Dell, if you look on the screen, along those lines, the existing trees will be saved. And then there will be additional planted to increase that buffer. That's the tree-save area. And I believe some of the trees in this section where you see the greenway trail, there will be some existing trees which are not categorized as heritage trees. Those will be undisturbed areas, so you will naturally see some tree-save as well.
Thank you. That's all I had.
This is Councilman Dellinger. I have a couple of time. And some, two of them are related to what Ian was saying. One about the TIA. I would agree that in today's society, many people are looking past 55. I'll look at it in my neighborhood and I've said it before. Many of the people that go in and out a number of times a day are age 55 and older. So just because we do think it is an older neighborhood, I think the trip tick is 75 homes and this is 77 homes. So I'd just like that to be brought to the attention. Also would like to talk about the heritage trees. As we know how long it takes a heritage tree, and as I recently learned at one of the water meetings, that it takes, that a mature tree absorbs 50 gallons to 100 gallons of water. And it's better to treat at the site of intake than it is pushing it elsewhere. I know as we go up Tom Query Road or Robinson Church Road to where the house is today, there's a lot of trees right in there. Are any of those going to be safe, Sushil, right where the house is?
Well, on the plan, there's heritage trees identified and some are to be saved and some are to be removed the way the lots are laid out. I don't know specifically which one you're talking about, but if you look on the agenda packet that was included, it did identify those trees that will be saved as part of the project. But again, at this point, it's shown as potential. As we go into the preliminary plat and construction document review, those will become, those will be flushed out more and will know more at that point. I think this plan does give you some idea of what those tree-save will look like in terms of heritage trees. And again, from the ordinance collective, the UDO calls for every effort that we need to make to save these trees. It does not give us authority just because there is a heritage tree to require it to be saved. It's a fine balance we try to maintain.
Well, I know the conditional requirements do basically state, well, we'll try our best. But as we know, if you don't get it in at this point, most, not anything will go. But I would just like the heritage trees to be more considered part of the conditional rezoning.
Well, there are 13 heritage trees that are identified in the site. Councilmember Ron and all that, seven of them are to be saved as per the plan.
All right. Thank you, Sushil. Moving on. So there are.
Hang on one second. Go ahead.
I also want to address the TIA comments that you made and Ian made. It's not the staff decision to not do the TIA. It's the ordinance that we have that defines when the TIA is triggered, based on the trip generated by a project. And in this case, the age-restricted community trip generation does not trigger that TIA. I just want to make that clear.
Sushil, this is Councilman Selberg, if I may jump in one second. As you make that statement, is that something that we can address in the upcoming UDO revamp that we're proposing?
Yes, we can. If the council does. If you recall, we revised the threshold several months ago. But we can revisit it. There is a desire to change that threshold.
Thank you.
All right. I have a few more comments. The UDO states in 6.2, 0.1, 0.1, 0.3, the proposed development, including its lot sizes, density, access, and circulation are compatible with the existing and/or permissible future of the adjacent property. So in looking at this development, it butts up to basically eight lots in Fenton Dell. Seven of those lots are .34 of an acre. One of them is .35. And then the older home that's there at the beginning of the neighborhood in Tom Query is 1.08 of an acre. If we look at the lots that butt up from this EPCON neighborhood, lots 33 through 47, they're basically .17. So I cannot look at .17, which is twice, would be .34, would be compatible. That is a concern because I believe we deliver to those neighbors to follow this when it does say that it is lot sizes, density that are compatible with the adjoining neighborhood. If we look at this development, there are 53 lots that are .19 acre or less. There are 23 lots that are between .20 and .29. And there's one lot that's .30. If you add up the 77 acres, the 77 lots, it will be on a total of 14.65 acres. So out of the basic 32 acres, the homes will just sit on 14.65 of an acre. So I wanted to bring that up, that this is a concern. Thank you.
Any more questions from council?
I've got one additional, Sushil, Councilman Smith here. You made the comment about the greenway. And I believe you said that would come up in construction documents. Is that correct?
Well, the greenway design and the profile, we as a town, we have our adopted greenway design.
Right.
What that profile looks like will be, like any other design, it comes during the construction documents. We tried to do through rezoning and the next phase is to add notes or anything that what we desire that will guide us through that construction documents. And identify general alignment. We can apply general landscaping. But what that actual profile looks like will come as part of the construction documents.
And that's not the plat approval, correct?
That's before the plat is approved.
Okay. So when the construction documents come up with, residents would not be given the opportunity to respond, but we could, as council, add, change items on there, correct?
Well, you have, the construction document was done at the staff level. I think we have our professional engineering staff, we have planning team. And also, in this case, NC DOT staff reviews all of those design criteria based on our adopted plans and national standards to make sure the greenway and roads and all of the construction are meeting those standards. So it's, council can ask us questions at that point, but there is no, it does not come, the construction document does not come to you for your approval. The preliminary plat will come to you. And once that is approved, then staff goes into much detailed review of these documents.
But we cannot change the preliminary plat, as we learned last meeting, correct? Preliminary plat just says, does it meet UDO or not meet UDO?
A couple of things. So preliminary plat has to be consistent with the rezoning you approve. And also, of course, it has to be consistent with the UDO requirements. If the council feels as a group that the preliminary plat that staff brings in front of you for your approval does not meet the intent, and if you're able to explain that, then you have every opportunity to take that on at that point. But you have to justify how it does not meet. But you have to justify how it does not meet, meet the zoning, rezoning intent.
So either we get everything captured tonight or from the residents that had any input or council, or it doesn't get covered then, if I understand what you're saying tonight.
So this is, this is the opportunity to capture most of the wishes and whatnots. And also keep in mind the applicant will need to read those if we are adding any, any additions. But yes, this is, this is the venue for any missing items or any, anything you would like to see on the plan. Because that will guide us as we go through the refinement of this planning, refinement of the plan for this project.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Sashil, this is Damon. I have two questions. One, what's the total acreage that's, that's being discussed and how much of that is green space?
So the total acres is 32.85. Total open space we have is 6.22 acres.
Okay. And then second question is, the developer also agreed to do buffers on, for those two homes where the Greenway entrance would be to Fenton Dell?
Yeah. So we added a note to the plant on either side of Greenway that goes and connects to Tottenham Drive. The type of planting, what plant, all of that will be determined during, during the construction document phase. But this will give us guidance that those plants will be, will be in place when, when the Greenway is built.
Okay. And that the 10 foot buffer behind it, they're, they're also going to do some planting behind that as well?
Only on the section of where it goes and connects to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So there is, there is a 10 foot Greenway and there's, in reality, what we call for Greenway, there is a 25 foot easement. So that 10 foot Greenway is built within that 25.
Okay.
And on those space that we have going through and connecting on Tottenham Drive, we will be adding some planting to provide that landscape that the neighbors had requested. An applicant is willing to plant those. And once it is planned and turned over to the town, town will maintain those.
And how much of the, the, of the acreage was not usable space, I guess, based on how the geography of the land is?
I don't have that calculation with me. I can get that to you.
Thank you.
I don't think we calculated that unusable space.
But it would be a part of the green space, right? It would be a part of the green space?
Yeah. So our UDO, UDO talks about the open space being active open space and passive open space. So whatever area that, that is undisturbed and remains as not developable, those will be your passive green space that remains on the side. Did, did you hear me?
Sorry. Yeah. I'm dead nodding and put myself back on mute.
Okay.
Sashil, Rick Russo. Any of Robinson Church have a traffic light?
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah. Do any of the entrances on Robinson Church have a traffic, traffic light?
The access off of Robinson Church that lines up with Bridge Point entrance, it does not have a traffic light at this point. Okay. Mike, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
I will load up your presentation and just give me a clue when you want me to advance to the next slide.
Okay.
You're on.
All right. Thanks. My name is Mike Davis. I'm with Epcun Communities. I'm their Director of Land Development. Our corporate address is 11,020 David Taylor Drive, Suite 105, Charlotte, North Carolina, 2822, 2862. Sorry. So Sashil, you can move to the next slide. I just wanted to give you a little information about who we are. We are privately held home building company. We've been building quality homes for the 55 plus for over 33 years. Our communities are age restricted versus age targeted. And I'll explain a little difference on the next slide, that difference. We're actively building in the Charlotte metro area since 2013. Our communities are smaller than your typical large scale, age targeted, age restricted communities like Del Webb, Trilogy and those type communities. Sashil, you can move to the next slide. What does age restricted mean? In December of 1995, HOPA Housing for Older Persons Act was signed into law. Under, under HOPA, it allows a community to restrict the units to be occupied or owned with at least one member being 55 or older. And under the law, 80% of the community or homes units must meet the above guidelines. These requirement, annual surveys, also annual surveys, surveys must be taken to adhere to the above guidelines. These requirements must be deeded to the property or part of the covenants, conditions, restrictions recorded to the property. So it's quite different than age targeted. Age targeted is just a marketing in that they can say they're age targeted, but from the ITE, which is Institute of Transportation Engineers, they still classify that as a typical single family. So age restricted is treated differently by the ITE. And that's what Sashil was referring to is the traffic generations are 50% less than your typical same, single family. Sashil, you can move to the next slide.
I'm trying.
No, that's all right. This is all new to me too, so.
You're good.
Okay. We're very excited about this site and being in the town of Harrisburg. We're considering a partnership where we're going to help with improving the intersection of Tom Query and Robinson Church with some conditions. And Sashil had mentioned that. Basically, the conditions where is just a dollar amount because we have not seen a design yet. Sashil's provided a budget. So we're fine with picking up our portion of 200,000 on the project. We're also extending the Greenway through our project and connecting it to Fenton Dell community and also adding the screening landscaping as requested. Also install pedestrian crossing lights for the Greenway at Robinson Church Road. We also, per planning board's request, Epcun agreed to increase the, increase the percentage of 55 plus homeowners to 90% of the community versus the minimum set under the HOPA Act of 80%. Some of the planning boards just wanted to increase that because of potential school impact to schools. Sashil, you can move to the, the next. Here's just the sketch plan. Sashil covered everything and we're proposing to, to build it, you know, exactly as, as, and that's the rendering. One thing I'd like to point out, and I know everyone focuses on the lot size. As part of our communities, the HOA maintains the exterior landscape around the homes. So that's part of the reason why the way we do our lots. We also only build ranches. So these ranches are 42 feet wide and 80 feet long. So they're large. So they take a good amount of property of the lot. But again, we do the lot size so that it minimizes the maintenance cost. It's hard to do or an age restricted maintenance included on three quarter acre, a half acre lot. So that's part of the reasoning. This next slide is showing the lots that bake up, back up to Fenton Dell, where we show the 20 foot non disturbed and then the 10 foot planted additional plantings to create that total 30 feet of buffer screening. You can move to the next one, Sashil. Again, this is some of our product which Sashil had in his presentation as well. And this just shows the Hardy plank, the stone. This community is in Morrisville. Just wanted to allow the council to see completed community. You can also zoom in to see the rear yard is passive. The next slide shows in more detail the uniqueness of our homes. This is an aerial shot. In between the homes is the homeowner's courtyard. That is their private area to maintain or improve. Folks will do fire pits to little water fountains to artificial grass and putting greens. It's quite interesting what our homeowners come up with. You'll also see at the rear of the homes, a six foot privacy fence. And then in the front, there is a four foot aluminum, black aluminum gate. So they can let their dogs out, have their own private area. And then every, everywhere outside of that area is maintained by the HOA. And again, you can see the rear yard is passive. You can move to the next slide there. This is a completed project down courtyards in Emerald Lake off of Lawyer's Road. I wanted to show this because it shows the completed clubhouse to the bottom. And then also what we call a pocket park to the top side of the photo. Showing we create focal points for seating, meeting, and also just general activity for folks to walk. Because our homeowners do enjoy walking on the sidewalks and are very active in their community. You can move to the next slide, Sashil. Here I've listed some benefits. Our communities generate good tax revenue for town, county, schools benefit from the high real estate as well because we have a low cost per household. We have a strong average home price. We're averaging 427,000 in the Charlotte area. That's a little over 200,000, $200 for square foot, sorry. We also use high quality architectural features. Hardy plank siding, culture strong, brick accents, different elevations. We also use 30 year architectural shingles. Also our buyers, homeowners support local businesses, restaurants and services where they live. Again, they're very active in their community. Typically, they donate more time and money towards charities and community causes. You can move to the next slide, Sashil. Also, our communities less impact, less traffic, 50% less traps per day than traditional single family homes and reduce travel during peak hours. We've actually done studies, traffic counts to confirm that in our communities in Charlotte, that they typically will travel after the, you know, the seven to, or the 6:30 to 8:30 and that, you know, 4:30 to 6:30. Also, our communities have less impact on services. Typical single family household has 3.35 people per home versus 1.7 for age restricted households. We have less impact on schools. Less than 3% historical have school aged children. In the Charlotte market, we're seeing 1%. And usually it's because of a tragic event or some family situation where a child is back in with grandparents. Our communities have a lower crime rate. So those are just some of the impacts. And I'm here to answer any of, anybody's any questions or provide any input. Again, we're just really excited about this project and hope we can move forward.
Page the council for questions.
This is Councilman Dellinger again. What is the build out date anticipated for the project?
I would anticipate it would probably take three to five months to get permitting, engineering approval. And then about six months to install all the site work. So it'd probably be later this year and then probably two years to build out. So about three to three and a half years from now.
And we know we're in a pandemic and we know the market is unstable right now. What if for a period of time that you could not sell all 77 homes? What is your plan to do at that point?
Well, we would be under the conditions of the rezoning. So we would have to be stay age restricted. So we would continue, you know, we can't tell what the market's going to do, but based on our demographics in Harrisburg, we believe there's a high demand for an age restricted product just because of the aging population in Harrisburg.
So I know you've already sent out some communications to part of the Harrisburg neighborhoods announcing that you were going to be in the area. Have you had feedback to, on that from Harrisburg residents?
Yeah, we had a community meeting. And we felt like we addressed a lot of their concerns. And most of them felt they would rather have our community next to them versus the typical single family playgrounds in the backyard, you know, trampolines, just your typical single family. So we felt pretty good that we would be a good neighbor.
But I'm not talking about the neighborhood, the meeting. I'm, I'm talking about the specific mailing that y'all put out to the entire neighborhoods where gave people opportunity to call Epcun and maybe say this, this is a good product or we're glad you're coming to Harrisburg. I'm talking about that.
Okay. All right. Well, we, we sent out a mailing for their community meeting. Is that what you're referring to? I'm not sure.
No, sir. I was, it was brought to my attention that, that neighbors in Fenton Dell did receive a postcard announcing the Epcun neighborhood. So I was just wondering if you got any feedback based on that postcard that you sent out announcing an Epcun neighborhood?
That must have been some of the marketing that was done. To my, let's say my department, I haven't received anything. Usually if, if there, let's say there was some pushback or some, some complaints, usually it would come back to me, but I haven't personally heard anything or gotten anything across my desk. So.
All right. Thank you very much for those questions.
Yes, sir.
This is Councilman Selberg. I, I have a one question. When the change from 80% to 90%, that will be part of the conditions of the deeded property. Am I correct with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
We had somebody drop in the chat window. I know I can't ask this, but this person can, looking for the price points of this community?
We would probably start in the, the middle threes. Other words, between 300 and 350, probably in the 320 range and go up from there.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right. So we're going to go into public hearing. I've got a list of names that I pulled off of the chat window. So I'm going to go with those first. Our town manager has a list of names of people who submitted through email, I believe it was an email. And they'll go second. And then we'll start this process over with the folks on the phone. That's where it's going to get a little sketchy because we know we open up the mute button. We're going to get a lot of feedback. So hopefully we'll be able to do this in a, in a, in a manner that, that works for everyone. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for those people speaking for or against. Again, I'm going to read my list. Town manager is going to lead, hit, read his list, and then we'll go back out to the public. So we're going to start with Chad Baucham. If you could state your name and address for the record, since this is being recorded, we'll be good.
Hey, good evening, Steve or Mayor. Thank you so much for taking my call. And before we get started, I just want to thank all of the, the town staff. I want to thank the council members, Mayor Steve, for everything you guys have done related to COVID-19. There's no question that you've worked really hard to keep the community informed. And, you know, just simply setting up something like a Zoom presentation so that people can participate in meetings, making sure that the water and the trash continues to happen, really just want to thank you for that. And, you know, me as well, as I'm sure quite a few others really noticed that and just wanted to thank you for that. I did want to, to touch on this particular proposal because I think it's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. And I have a couple of concerns here, but bottom line is, is that this council is in a bit of a bind here, right? So for the first time since the recession of 08 and 09, you're essentially being asked to make a decision on a large development proposal during a period of submit of a pretty bad economic uncertainty. We hope that it turns out great. We're not sure. So bottom line is it's something where you have to be really, really comfortable with the proposal. Now, in the past, you've known who the developer was, you've known what they wanted to do. You probably knew what the price point was, and in fact, you do based on the comment that just came through. You may have seen rendering such as what was on the presentation a few slides ago. And you probably know that in this case, like a Mr. Davis is undoubtedly a, a good guy who is trustworthy and has nothing but the best intentions. But at the end of the day, we have to acknowledge that knowing what happened in 08 and 09 to a lot of the builders, we have to understand that we may not always get exactly what we're seeing in the presentation, right? So not every builder makes it through these times. And you've got to be absolutely comfortable with and very, very clear with the fact that this is residential village zoning, no matter who the developer is, no matter what you're saying on the presentation. If you're not 100% comfortable with that, this will be a mistake. I, I think if it comes, if it turns out the way that you're seeing it, there's a lot of positive things about this, this subdivision. So I don't want to make it sound as if there's not, but there are risks here associated with that. The second one is really more specifically around this layout. So in the past, you guys have heard plenty of times the, the cut through traffic issue that Bridgepoint has. And there's a road called Baybrook Lane as well as Bridgepoint Drive. And typically in the mornings and the afternoons when Hickory Ridge been a little higher in session, that's when you see the impacts. Ultimately, what you're going to see here is that because there is the connector, which, which you saw on Robinson Church Road to Baybrook Drive, and because we also know that there's a lot of things that are kind of outside of the town's control, right? So when it comes to the state roads, that's not something that you guys can directly impact or at least not something that, that you can snap your fingers and make a change to. And we know that there are issues when it comes to the Veterans Bridge Road slash Stalling slash Hickory Ridge Road area, where you have that, that we'll call it a, a Z shape, where people have to go, they may have to make a right turn, then a left turn. There's a lot of backups that go through there. And that's really one of the reasons why it leads to, to the cut throughs in Bridgepoint. What this is going to do with the current layout is you're adding an additional artery so that someone who may be in like a Camelot subdivision or Huntwick or other areas such as that, you know, they see that traffic all the time. They don't want to deal with it. And they may make the decision to simply cut through this new subdivision as well as go across Robinson Church Road, cut through Bridgepoint and be almost right at Hickory Ridge. So I, I bring that up because at the end of the day, it, it's not that those folks aren't, aren't doing anything wrong. I mean, they're just doing what they can to get through the, the traffic that they see. But I really do think that as you're looking at this proposal, I hope that number one, you'll consider either, either rejecting or deferring until the developer can provide a proposal that's a little more consistent with what I view the, the neighboring subdivision's actual zoning to be. And number two, and, and what's really important to me personally is until changes can be made to the plat so that while it may be great from the standpoint of, of the, you know, from a planning perspective, it's less than optimal when it comes to, to traffic through, through those two subdivisions. So hey, thanks again, guys. I'll go on mute. I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. So as I call your name, make sure you come off of mute, but nobody else come off of mute. Just that one person. This will make it a lot cleaner. Virginia Lita?
Okay.
I can see you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I have two concerns, but the second one is dependent on the first. So at the neighborhood meeting, I brought this up. At the planning and zoning board meeting, I brought this up. I asked if we have received written approval from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And they were still working on it. I brought it up again in an email before this meeting. And as of at least what, maybe 10 days ago, Sushil, when we last interchanged, I, I don't think we've received the approval yet. So here's my concern. My concern is that we put you all in a position to vote this evening on something. And what happens if the North Carolina Department of Transportation comes back and says, dudes, we already denied this last time around. We told you putting anything near Tom Query and Robinson Church, the intersection there, it's not going to work. What does that do? You've, you've already approved something that then is not considered safe. And then it puts the developer in a box because unless they can build that many number of homes, there's no way they could drop it down to a number lower than 30 and still make it profitable. What do you do then? So that's my first concern. And with that, I would ask that you actually not vote on it tonight. I'm not saying decline it, but I'm saying defer the vote until you have all the necessary proper approvals in place to go along with it. The second thing is that if you do decide to go ahead and vote tonight, I have concerns about how the connection will be built from Fenton Dell into the Greenway piece into the part that's on the new property. I, I know there's the rainwater ditch there and I am very concerned that how anything gets built if that's not built properly. And I told Sushil, we need a bridge, a walking bridge. And he said it'll be built in accordance with the UDO and the guidelines, but no one can show me an artist rendering of what it will look like, what materials will be used, whether it'll have floodlights to walk at night that might shine right into my bedroom. I mean, I don't know what we're going to wind up with. And then when I hear tonight from the questions Ron asked, that if we don't hash this out tonight, I lose my voice and can speak to you on this matter going forward because it'll just be decided in the construction phase and then we get whatever you give us. That concerns me. So if you are going to go ahead and vote on this tonight, and if you do decide that you want to go ahead with the property, then I'm going to ask you at this point in time that you strike out that connection from Fenton Dell to the new property for the Greenway purposes and let Sushil come back at another date, once all that is hashed out and decide how it's going to look and how the drainage area in my yard is going to be protected so that I don't have a swamp every time it rains. That's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we get some of these questions, we'll go back to the developer or Sushil towards the end after we get through with this and then we'll get some of those answered. So we're going to go down the list. Patrick Ryan?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, perfect. And to kind of echo what Chad Balkum said, certainly thank you for all the leadership. Everybody at the town is doing at these unprecedented times, for sure. So the several of the members here in Bridgepoint, and I'm on the HOA board. So I've had a lot of communication. So people have kind of like funneled a lot of questions through me and some concerns. And, and one of the big concerns has to do with not requiring TIA in this area. And we would actually, a lot of people would, would like to actually see that data come through. I don't know if that's something that you guys can add as a condition this evening if you do vote on it. But when you take a look at the North Carolina annual average daily traffic map application, the, there's some data points out there showing that, you know, in 2016 was the last time that there was something done at Tom Query Road. If you follow it around at the, from the intersection of Tom Query and Robinson Church, you know, they've got some other data that shows that it was done in 2012. And then some other data points show that it's done in 2014. There's some, you know, so basically, you know, are we really looking at comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges on the traffic that's going to be generated from this? Because you're going to like, you know, adding 77 typically times two, you're adding basically 150 more vehicles to an intersection like Chad very eloquently put is probably going to be using Baybrook Lane to cut through to get to Hickory Ridge, to get to, you know, we all see how the, the traffic backs up and, and that's just creating an issue for us. Because if it comes down Baybrook, it comes right by Bridgepoint, it comes right by our amenities center, comes right by a pool. And a lot of residents are concerned about that. And also the realignment, ultimately, I know and completely understand that this project has nothing to do with the realignment of Bridgepoint Drive and Tom Query Road. But that is the plan and there's nothing that gets us around that. So we were wondering, how do we make assurances that it doesn't turn into a straight shot for future development? You know, maybe that's a condition of the next one that comes up. I'm not sure. But residents of Bridgepoint are, are really concerned that that's going to be the case ultimately. And, and we would like to have that discussion now because, you know, we're not playing checkers anymore. We have to play chess as we use these strategic decisions to look at our, you know, traffic flows. The other concerns that we have, a lot of people have talked about the lot sizes. Fenton Dell, across the street at Windsor Forest, all up and down Tom Query Road, RM1, minimum lot size is 15,000. Across the street at Bridgepoint, minimum size RM1 is 15,000. You're asking for 7,500, you know, lot size here. You know, there's 42 lots that are between 7,500 and seven, and 8,000 square feet. 16, 16 of them between 8,000 and 9,000 and 15 lot sizes between 9,000 and 10,000. So people, you know, majority of that is the 7,500 square foot range. And so again, people have concerns about from a real estate, you know, sale standpoint, that that is, you know, that, that's a concern from that standpoint. And the other one is the Bridgepoint residents on the backside of the neighborhood that, that do face Robinson Church Road. You know, they, they lose the, the tree thing. So looking at the, the map that's out there, there are only three trees that look like they get saved. And I would like to get some clarification from Sushil that the pocket park active open space is that, are, are the trees removed and only trees number six, 10 and 11 stay on that side? So, you know, that's, that's a big concern too, because now you've just, what's been described is the residents now look across the street and they see, you know, a white picket privacy fence where trees weren't stood. I get it, you know, I just, I guess the question is, can, can they, can the developer do anything to save as many trees as possible to create the aesthetic view that most people are accustomed to and the reason why they wanted to move there? So, and, and Chad obviously hit, hit on the other topics of, of, of traffic, which, which is a concern. But, but those are the things that the Bridgepoint residents have a concern with and certainly hope the town council will take those in consideration. Thank you.
Next up, Michael Covington. Michael, come off of mute.
Trying to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, good. I appreciate all, I want to echo the words that have been stated earlier. I do appreciate all the town has done to, to maintain all services during, during this restricted time that we've been and y'all have done a stellar job. And I greatly appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to, to speak to you on a couple of matters about this. One is I'd like someone to tell me how you administer this 90% 55 and older ownership. I understand how you can restrict who owns it. The problem that I have is, does it have to be owned and occupied by 55 and above? Because we have a number even here in Fenton Dell of rental properties. And I could see a number of 55 and above people who may own the property but who renting it and basically turning it into something other than a 55 and above type community. My second concern, which is at tension with my first, is how do you enforce that to where that it doesn't become economically challenging for the owner of said property to basically resell said property at future points in time, particularly as the community demographics change? So those are, are two areas of concern. Concerning Jenny's earlier comment about making sure that the Greenway didn't become an area of flooding, I would like to see you, the council, consider something in terms of strengthening the condition that is there. I'm not asking, I live in Fenton Dell, but I'm not asking them not to move forward with this tonight. But I would like to get them to consider strengthening the condition that would make sure that Jenny and other homeowners adjacent to the Greenway can be and are assured that, that is going to be done in a way that does not detract from their property values and create a flooding situation for them. I think that's incumbent upon this council to do. It also, another point, Mr. Davis previously said they had no problem paying their share of a $200,000 estimate on the rework of Tom Query and Robinson Church. What happens if the cost is double that? Is Mr. Davis and, and his company going to be on the hook for their proportional share? Or is he basically only saying they're going to cover their proportional share of a $200,000 estimate? That as I heard in previous communications here tonight, we don't know what that estimate might be. I think I heard a number of $350,000. Well, Mr. Davis is saying, I'm going to pay my share of 200,000 and the town saying that the last estimate we looked at was 350,000. There seems to be a bit of a disconnect there, so I'd just, just would like to get some clarification there. Also, I note on, on the plat that the exit onto Tom Query is right in, right out only. I just want to understand if council is in any way, shape nor form contemplating any modifications to the in and out restrictions that may be associated with Tottenham. And I'm hoping the answer to that question is no, but would like to hear that answer tonight. Let's see. Can we, and, and can you also, in addition to Jenny's first point, can you strengthen the requirement to make this approval conditional upon receipt of DOT approval? So that's it. They, they can't move forward with the project until you get that because that seems to be a sticking point. And you don't want to wind up having yourself approved and then having it approved based upon something that is unacceptable to you. Seems to me you could do that approval with the condition that DOT provides an acceptable solution that is acceptable both to council and to the developer before this is. So then if you get to that point, then it's, it's met that, that conditional approval. I greatly appreciate and will listen to the comments that you have to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll again try to address concerns upon conclusion of the public hearing before we go back to council. So we'll move to the next person on my list is Christopher Barfield. Come off mute. Christopher? All right, we'll, we're going to jump past Christopher. I'll go back to him unless he gets up.
Mayor, I'll just come back on.
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, so I had a, I wanted to thank mayor, council staff for setting up a unique opportunity for everyone to participate. for everyone to participate in this meeting. It's, it's extremely unique, but I think you guys are doing a great job in, in getting that done. Yeah, I generally speak in favor of this development, based on some of the conditions that have been changed since voting no against it last year around this time, particularly around the age 55 and up, community portion of it, but also the cut through piece that has been removed from Fenton Dell. I do have a couple of concerns though, that would like some clarification from the developer and also from the town. One, Epcun is the builder for the community that is adjacent to Harrisburg Park. There, there were some trees that were removed that were not supposed to be removed, and that was a bit of a lengthy process to get that settled and some erosion issues. What is the developer going to do to mitigate those issues? More so this time than last time they were building in, in Harrisburg. Further, what would the town do to hold them further accountable so that, that exercise does not happen again, have to go through the same process? But in reference to, you know, the cut through traffic and the unforeseen economic development that is happening or potentially happening with the, the conditions that are out there, those are things that are way outside the council's purview, in my opinion. We cannot control the economy. It, it's not the council's duty to try to fix that or to make a developer profitable or not. That information should not be used, in my opinion, by council to make a decision for or against. The, the other piece as far as cut through traffic, those are public roads, and people have a right to drive on them even if they don't like it. It, it's not a gated community, and hopefully, the, the way the design works with Camellia Gardens and other development happening along stylings, that roadway improves to where they won't, won't to cut through. So those are my two questions, though, is what is the developer going to do about protecting trees and erosion, and how's the town going to hold them mechanical? Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, Shimrose. I saw you a picture online, so I know you're out there somewhere. Come off a mute. All right, we're going to jump past Shimrose. If you want to throw your name back in the chat, because that's where I found you in the first place, when you come back on, we'll go back to you. So I'm going to go to town manager for his list.
All right, mayor and council, just like we mentioned earlier in the meeting, because of the unusual circumstances of the meeting tonight being held virtually and over the phone, we gave members of the public the opportunity to submit voicemails and emails to us once the agenda was published on Thursday. So just trying to do our best to give everybody the opportunity to have their feedback heard. We did communicate that any email, voicemail that we got will be read aloud and be considered part of the minutes of the meeting tonight. So we did not receive any voicemails from the public, but we did receive one email, and so I'm going to read that email aloud. The email is from Kim, Ken Seibert. His address is 7917 Tottenham Drive. He states, "I have a question for the town council meeting regarding the property located at 1700 Robinson Church Road, rezoning for the age-restricted single-unit family home project. My question is, I want to know if the NC DOT has balled in and formally agreed in writing to the right turn in only to the new development of Tom Query Road? If not, why not, and what is the next step to get this approved? Thank you." So very similar question to one we have already received tonight, will be able to provide an answer, but those are the only emails or voicemails that we receive.
All right, so now we're going to go to the part where it's going to get probably a little chaotic, and we're going to go out to anybody else wishing to speak. But this time, I know it's going to be hard. If you're still wishing to speak for, against this, and you're on the phone, you get unmuted, and we're going to attempt to just go freestyle here. Just be aware that others may jump in on topics, so just take a pause, and we'll make sure we get to you next. So I'll open it up to anyone at this point wishing to speak for or against this project. Anyone? Can you guys hear me? Okay. It's a quiet crowd. I'm going to pause for a second, and we'll go back out. Shimrose, if you're out there, I know you chatted me in this window.
This is Chris Cornett.
Okay, can you give your address as well, please?
7969 Dell Drive. I, I really like the, the improvements that the developer has made here in not cutting through the, the Dell Drive and Fenton Dell neighborhood, and, and the Greenway improvement. I, I agree with what Michael had said about making sure that it doesn't harm the property value of, of the neighboring, the neighboring houses there.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to Ron, Councilman Ron Smith. He has an email that he has along with an address, so we'll read that. And before we go back to actually closing the public hearing, I'll give this a little bit unprecedented, we're going to allow Sushil, town manager, as well as the developer to answer the questions that have been presented thus far, and if that far as any more conversation, we'll get back in the queue. You can chat me in the window. Again, we'll just try to keep it as brief as possible, but we'll go ahead and try to get the questions answered before I close the public hearing. So I'll go to Councilman Ron Smith now.
Thank you, mayor. This comes from Ms. Cheryl Cheek. She's at 7746 Coachman Court. And she, she reached out, like I said, just a few minutes before the meeting, and I'll just read directly her comments. She says she's a longtime resident in Windsor Forest, she's attended many council meetings, and is very disappointed about the meeting tonight. This is not a time to address this type of issue. We are all at financial risk due to additional stress. This has a negative impact on the health of the community as a whole. Both physical and mental health is affected by these decisions. The signs regarding this meeting was so ill-placed, I could not visualize it without risk of personal injury. If this is not, I feel this is a sense of urgency to communicate with someone, and I did not have the capability to attend the virtual meeting. I'm a working nurse caring for the community and see the impact, see the impact that unexpected stress can create these times. Thank you for your time and service, and this is a matter of great concern. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, so if we have anybody else wishing to speak right now before we try to answer some of the questions, speak now. All right, we're going to go to Sushil and the town manager, and as well as the developer to hit up some of the questions.
Sure, I'll go ahead and get it started on some of the comments. So there was comment about the NC DOT reviewing the plans and giving some approval on, on the improvements that are sound. So just wanted to clarify that NC DOT staff that reviews the plans are part of the staff review team with, with the town staff. So when we review this plan, they've seen this plan and they've agreed on whatever access is proposed. So that's why you see on the site plan, there are notations on coordination with NC DOT. NC DOT has seen this access point, full access on Robinson Church Road, right in, right out on Tom Query, and they are in agreement with what has been proposed as part of the review process. There is not a, a letter of agreement or any document of that nature that is prepared as part of the review. It's, it's typical that they review with us together, and they provide comments, and we have documented comments that they are agreeable to what is in the plan, pending details to be flushed out. There was comment about the Greenway connection going to Tottenham Drive, the water destroys. I had a conversation with, with the, with the applicant, and they think that there is not a bridge requirement, but there might be some kind of pipe installation required, but those will be, again, we have a capable professional staff in our engineering teams that will look at those, and we are required by law not to impact neighboring properties. All the water generated from the site needs to be contained on the site. It cannot impact a neighboring property. So we will be taking care of that through our review process. There was concern about the TIA requirement. Again, I think I noted that earlier, that because of the trip generated by age-restricted community and number of homes we have, it did not trigger the threshold we have in our TIA ordinance, because of that we have no ability to require a TIA. Let's see. There was comment about Robinson Church Road and Bridgepoint residents having to see the vinyl fence. If you look on the site plan, there is a notation that there is 25-foot planted buffer with six-foot height berm. So there will be a berm installed along Tom Query and Robinson Church Road to help with some of that concerns. There was comment about how to enforce the 55-plus community. That restriction is, is in your deed. Once the project is approved, that goes in the deed and is restricted through, by notation on the deed. Let's see. So at this point, there, there is every indication that DOT is in favor of full access at Robinson Church Road. What they required us to put a note is a right in going into the community and left in from Robinson Church Road, and we have made that notation on the plan. And on the right in, right out on Tom Query, they agree with the right in, right out concept. One thing we don't know is how big of the island it needs to be, how far that island needs to go. So those will be determined in consultation once we get into the design phase. We have documentation from NC DOT staff that they favor the access point the way it is shown, pending those details. So I don't see any danger of them not approving. There was comment made about Epcun community in Harrisburg. So just to clarify, what you see built in Harrisburg Courtyards is a franchise of Epcun. Epcun itself did not build that, and I'm going to let Mike speak to that later on. So that's a franchisee of Epcun. This community as proposed will be built by Epcun itself. So there is a slight distinction, and I want Mike to clarify that once I hand it over to him. We do have requirements in the ordinance where we identify some of the streets that are to be saved. There has to be a perimeter created to save those trees, and if for some reason beyond the control that the tree dies, then we do have mitigation measures that staff reviews and approves on a case-by-case basis. I think those are the high-level questions I had. I'm going to let Mike speak to that. Mike, if you want to speak about the 55-plus, and how that applies to rental units, if there's any, how do you plan to manage that? And also if you could address the Epcun Courtyards issue as well.
Yeah, as well as any sale of property for the buyer, or the current buyer selling to the next person, making sure that that's still restricted.
Correct.
Yes. As part of our communities, the HOA has a property manager that will make sure in any transfer that it goes to a 55-plus, because it is part of the deed restriction and the CCRs. So they will, because they have to maintain that designation as they move forward, because it is a deed restriction. And in some cases, we provide, the property managers provide that information to the town. So if the town wishes, we could make that part of it. As Sushil said, the other, let's say, Epcun Communities was built by New Style Communities, which is a franchisee. Epcun got its start in Columbus, Ohio, selling franchise, or the model to sell 55 to 55-plus buyers. In 2013, they decided to set up a corporate store in Charlotte and in Raleigh, and we have limited all franchisees in the area. So we are the only ones in the Charlotte market actively building. So it is a corporate, as they say, corporate store. Let's see, what other? There was some talk about the financial contribution to the intersection. And in my discussion with Sushil, we don't quite know how that configuration is, and we want to be, Epcun wants to be a partner, because we, we feel the community needs it, and the realignment would help. We just don't know the, the price or the cost, I should say. And so I was trying to get some reasonable obligation on the record, so.
Let me, let me address that point I failed to mention. So for the improvements on Tom Query and Robinson Church Road, we estimated, last time we looked at it, 300,000 to 400,000 total cost. So that cost will be divided in three ways. One will be the, this project, if it goes through, probably most, most likely 50% of that share, 25% of the cost up to 100,000 will be coming from, say, homes that was part of their mitigation improvement coming out of the TIA, and 25% or up to 100,000 would be the town funded. So we have those funds set aside for this intersection improvement. So it's a partnership between three different entities to, to do that intersection improvement.
All right, so while we have the developer still hanging on, I buy one, I pass away, and now it's going to my children. How is that handled? This is a question from Michael Covington. Inheritance.
It would still go to, it'd have to go to a 55-plus owner.
So the, the kids would have to either sell it or find somebody 55 and older living it.
Correct.
And the next question, this goes back to Sushil. Does the pocket park indicated on the site plan mean the trees will be saved in these areas or cut down and other vegetation planted back?
Can you address that, Mike? We didn't have the details on that, but I think we talked about on the passive area and where the parks are, whatever trees saved, we can maintain, we were to maintain that.
Yes, it depends on the location of the park. We've got several of them. Some of them will be, the site will be masqueraded, some, and the perimeter will save as many as we can, and then obviously meet the, the town of Harrisburg, tree planting ordinances, whatever's required. And a lot of times, we will actually do more than is required. If you go to any of our, any of our existing communities, we do plant a lot of trees. We like a nice-looking community.
Next question, probably Sushil. Is the proposed traffic circle at Tom Query and Robinson Church part of this?
Can you repeat that, ma'am?
Is the traffic circle at Tom Query and Robinson part of this development?
It is not. Roundabout that intersection is a future desire of NC DOT, but there is no funding nor the project at this point. So the proposed improvement is to realign Tom Query, so it has a better site distance to Robinson Church Road and install a traffic signal.
Next question, is there a plan to reduce the speed limit on Tom Query? Which I pretty much know the answer.
Without further data, they will maintain the speed as it is today.
Next question. So you're asking the taxpayers to fund a portion of the development?
Town had plans to improve that intersection and had buzzed it some amount. We were hoping to leverage that with private investment and with NC DOT. So this is not a new funding. We did plan to improve that intersection, and there was always going to be some funds going towards that intersection improvement.
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit further. So to Sushil's point, what he's trying to describe is, when the town implemented the transportation bonds... transportation bonds three years ago now, part of the improvements associated with the transportation bond were related to the Tom Query and Robinson Church Road intersection, where we had committed funds, the town council voted to commit as part of the project list to utilize transportation bond dollars was to improve that intersection. Now, we had first committed to doing that all on our own, so we were going to bear completely that $300,000 to $400,000 price that Sushil mentioned. We've been fortunate to take advantage of private development with the Camellia Gardens proposal and approval on Stallings Road, as well as this one, if it moves forward and is approved, that will reduce the town's contribution. So we had already committed to spend these funds. It's in no way, shape, or form, you know, part of these projects, other than we are getting to take advantage of the developers in their response to providing the traffic impacts and the improvements to those for our community. So it's really reducing the cost that the town had otherwise expected to bear.
Will the, next question. Will the power lines on Robinson Church Road be buried? I'm looking for Patrick Brown, who said that, I lost my spot. Or stay overhead on poles? I'm guessing they're not, this is not part of the project, or is it part of the project? Sushil.
If you're talking about the streets itself, I think those will stay overhead. Internal to the subdivision, those will go underground.
Got it. How will the builder be held responsible if there's erosion behind the homes in Fentondale?
We have our grading inspector and our engineering team reviews those, and there are implications if those are not followed.
How is, new community builder ensures that it's not impacting neighborhood community house prices?
We cannot control that, ma'am.
Will taxpayers fund a for-profit company again in the future?
No comments from staff.
Yeah, this project in no way is funding a private entity.
All right. So I've got more questions popping up on the Zoom chat. I'm going to go open it back up to who wants, this is a little bit freestyle again. Come off of mute and state your name and address if you have any additional questions before we go to council for consideration. So I'll open it up to the floor.
This is Jenny Lito. So Sushil, back to Angie Brown's question about the erosion. What are the implications that the builder would be subject to?
Okay, well, hold on to that for a second. I'll go back out to the floor for any other questions or comments.
Michael Covington here, 7884 Grimsby Circle. I'm just trying to figure out who determines, who qualifies for the 10% variance from a fully compliant 55 and above community. It seems to me inheritance-type situations should certainly receive some sort of priority in that where adult children who inherit property but who are under 55 should not be forced, particularly in an economically challenged time like our current situation or 2008, to divest of said property just to maintain a 90% level, particularly when you already have 10% of the houses in there. So you've got 7.7 houses that already allowed to be owned by someone less than 55 or occupied by 55. And I've never got a clarification on occupancy versus ownership because of the rental issue.
Before we go back to developer for one last round of answering any more questions from the floor, I do have a comment from somebody online, just want to offer support for this project, a 55 and over community. Would add good spenders, high tax, low resource use, enriching schools without adding students to it. I'm going to go back out to the floor for any other comments, verbal comments. And here and then we'll go back to Sushil on erosion control consequence. So if it happens, what's the consequence model?
So if there are erosion control issues and our inspector catches that, then there is immediately a stop work order issued. So until that erosion problem is fixed, they cannot do anything on the site. Any construction activities will be stopped at that point.
Back to the developer on 10% variance. How do you manage the 10% variance rule?
Well, in our records show that our average age is 67. We really don't see a lot of folks below the 55. So it's, we haven't run into an issue. I say we are just, our records show most of the folks are retired. Now, there's always somebody that does work or one works, but it's, it's not, you know, seven homes are an exact amount. We just, our communities, our homes are built for the 55-plus, but like I said, we, we're in the 67s is our average age of buyer.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the town manager. I believe he has one more comment to make before we close public hearing.
Yeah, mayor and council, this is more of a point of information comment that I want everyone to understand. So obviously, if you look at our agenda for this evening, it's fairly light in terms of new business items, and that's by design. We've done our best recognizing these difficult times, recognizing that we're not able to come to a physical place together, to gather, to have the conversations about town business. So we've done everything that we can to limit those new business items and new considerations. Ideally, if we could have, we would have pushed this public hearing off to a future date in hopes that we could have a physical meeting place. But I just wanted to point out a couple of items. Number one, our code of ordinance requires us to, for the town council to hear and make a decision on a proposed rezoning within 60 days of the planning board's determination. The planning board heard this proposal during their February council meeting. So unfortunately, from a timeline perspective, we were unable to push this out any further. There's also some state guidelines and some legal guidelines that present liabilities to us if we do not provide property owners quick and decisive action on items. So we want to be fair to the property owner, we want to be fair to the applicant, and we're trying our best to be fair to the public that may be impacted by this. But just wanted to take that time to have a point of information for everyone that if we could have, we would have pushed this off, but unfortunately, we were restrained to do it in this capacity, and we hope everyone appreciated the opportunities that we gave them before the meeting, which is a little unusual. So we hope that kind of helped offset. So I just wanted to make that point of information for everyone.
All right. So we're getting ready to close the public hearing. I'm going to read one more comment here. Popped up before I get my cursor right. Photos of the neighborhood like to propose next to neighborhood from, so there was photos that were provided during the presentation. I don't know if you got on late. We can make sure that the pictures are posted. They are probably already online, right? You want to flash up the picture real quick on our screen? If you're online, obviously you are, he'll put up a couple of the products. All right, I'm going to go one last call before I close this public hearing because I know this is a little different than we normally do. So I'm going to go one more time, and this time it's comments, no questions. So then we'll move to council for consideration where they'll also have comments for themselves. And last positive comment on here was overall support design, subject to assurance on erosion and traffic. Thanks for all you do. Thank you. All right. And here and then I'm going to close the public hearing, go to council for consideration. If council motions or has more discussion, please start by stating your name so we can capture what's going on.
I'm mayor.
I heard, I heard too. Troy, Councilman Troy, Ron, or two. We'll go with Councilman Ron, I heard you first. Go ahead.
As Mr. Barfield mentioned, this neighborhood is a bigger or a better improvement of what was being proposed previously. I know the folks of Fitten Dell have expressed that they were happier with the greenway space being used instead of an access road to that neighborhood. Although, you know, I'm close to that 55 age, I'm at 53. I find it interesting that suddenly when you get 55, your kids disappear. I'm waiting for that day to happen myself, but the kids are still with me. And, you know, I know quite a few folks that are at my age or older that still have kids. So the idea that just because we make it 55 and up doesn't mean that we won't impact schools, we won't impact traffic. The age of retirement has certainly gotten further out. And then my other concern is, is how many age-restricted neighborhoods do we really want to have in Harrisburg, or are we trying to become the next Sun City? Troy, go ahead.
Mayor, I proposed or motion that we approve this project as it's being presented. We, as a council, have done all we can within our UDO. I want to commend staff for what they have been able to do within their legal rights to keep these builders within where they need to be. I would also like to state that some of the comments brought up by other council members are part of what we're trying to do within the community of realigning our UDO. Once that is done, many of these questions will be answered, but within our legal rights, I see that this rezoning has met all the requirements. Therefore, I would motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor? We got it properly seconded? That was, obviously. Any more discussion? Okay, I'm going to read down the list. Nay or nay? Councilman Ron Smith?
Nay.
Councilman John Booth, if you joined us? Councilman Rodney Dillinger?
Nay.
Councilman Ian Patrick?
Nay.
Councilman Rick Russo?
Nay.
Motion fails. Got that, Janet? All right. We'll conclude this. That pretty much negates the second public hearing, but we'll open it then, or is it just canceled? All right, we're going to go into 6B, which is the annexation, obviously the property that did not get rezoned. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. And obviously, no sense in speaking for or against something that's not going to pass at this point. So I'm going to close the public hearing and go to council for consideration of obviously not approving the annexation. I entertain a motion not to approve it, but deny the annexation.
Motion not to approve, Smith.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second. This is Ian.
Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. I actually have a lot down the list again. Councilman Ron. Councilman John Booth out. Councilman Rodney. Mr. Rodney. We'll skip to Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilman Diamond, Councilwoman Diamond, see I messed up? We're going back to Councilman Rodney, got too many councilmen. Mr. Rodney. All right. Motion carries. All right, so we're going to have to go step back. I'm going to ask, I know Rich Cook, our town attorney's on, do we need to do a consistency statement on the previous vote? Mr. Rich Cook? Mr. Cook, do we need to do a consistency statement for the rezoning denial? Can anybody see him? I know his picture was out here a second ago.
Rich, is your phone muted there, sir?
He's talking, but I can't hear him.
Mayor, he looks like he's speaking, but nobody can hear.
Yep. Did somebody text him?
I'm wondering if his phone might be muted.
I can't hear him on the.
This will be a statement based on the original vote, which was that it did not pass, okay? So the consistency statement would be based on the staff presentation and staff report and the presentation and report by the applicant. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Land Area Youth Plan, but is not reasonable and not consistent with public interest.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for the consistency statement.
Motion to approve, Smith.
We got a motion on the floor by Councilman Ron.
Second.
Councilman Rodney, yeah, I actually will go back down the list. Councilman Ron?
Yes.
All in favor say aye. Yes. Councilman Rodney? Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Oh, aye.
Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move to new business contract for Sloan Construction.
All right, mayor and council, I will actually turn this over to Rob Dunham, our Public Works and Engineering Director. What you have before you tonight is a request to approve a contract with Sloan Construction for what we are referring to as a spring repaving project. So we want to take advantage of some dollars that are available to us, some remaining dollars available to us from our power bill fund, as well as some others throughout our budget to complete a secondary paving project. Most of our power bill dollars and paving project took place in the fall, but we want to, again, just accomplish as many street paving opportunities as we can. This will also correlate in conjunction with our transportation bond and the issuance of our first drawdown of those dollars to be done later this year. But with that, I will turn it over to Rob and our financial staff if they have any input that they wish to provide for this item. uh, to be done, uh, later this year, but with that I will turn it over to, uh, Rob and our financial staff if they have any input that they wish to provide for this item.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Hanes. Hopefully everybody can hear me, okay? Uh, what you have before you here, uh, tonight is a pretty, uh, straightforward contract. This is for, uh, fiscal year 2020, spring repaving project is, Hanes had spoke about before. This isn't, uh, a traditional paving that, uh, we do every year, so in the previous years, um, we usually do a, uh, early fall, um, late spring, I'm sorry, early fall, late summer paving project with our Powell Bill funds, and, uh, that's usually around $400,000 is what we receive as a town for Powell Bill funding. In the, in the previous year, we did that project and we also did a, uh, a bond project, uh, of another, I think about $350,000 at the same time. What we are trying to do is, is play a little catch-up, um, as you guys know, our, our roads, um, took a beating the last couple of years due to weather, um, age of when the neighborhoods all kind of went in at the same time, so we have some deteriorating roads. Um, the second slide, if you could go to that, Brian, will show you the, uh, total cost and the, uh, road list that we're doing here in the spring. Um, so we have $215,000, uh, that we'd like to spend on, uh, the areas here Candy Stick Drive, Manchester and Dorchester, which are in the Huntwick neighborhood, and then several roads there in the Coventry subdivision. We go to the next slide, I have a map, um, of just where exactly those roads are. So you can see Candy Stick and then, uh, the two roads in the Huntwick neighborhood, and then the portions of the roads that we would do in the Coventry subdivision. In all these projects, uh, we have a contingency fund, um, just depending on what we get into there, if the, uh, base, base conditions are poor or we run into something, we always have some contingency funds, we will run those out, so these limits are approximate. If we have better road conditions in the base than we anticipate, uh, we would do more of Underwood, and then we would finish, uh, hopefully this neighborhood out in, uh, next year's Powell Bill funding. Uh, the next slide that we have is the bid tab. So these are the three, um, contractors that, uh, bid on the project and, uh, Sloan Construction, who recently acquired a, a company called Granite, who is a, a local paving contractor here that always bids our projects and has a work history with us, um, ended up being the low bidder at 215,000. I'll turn it over to, to Brian to discuss just kind of what we did, um, in order to, to free up some of this, uh, additional money to squeeze in another paving project this year.
Hey, thanks, Rob, um, so I just wanted to talk really quickly about where we're sourcing the funds for this project from. So, as you see in the budget amendment that's before you tonight, we're pulling fun, funds from various, uh, accounts within the general fund and Powell Bill. So we're taking guns from maintenance and repair streets, uh, signs, chemicals account, which is a road paint, uh, salt and chemical road, as well as street lights, so we're pulling from any account that's originally related to streets or transportation in the first place, to put together this project, so, um, about 80,000 comes from the general fund on, uh, from these operating accounts and the remaining 135 comes from Powell Bill, 40 of that is from, uh, additional operating accounts and then 95,000 comes from our Powell Bill reserves, so at the beginning of the year, we entered the year with about 157,000 in Powell Bill reserves. This 95, uh, will take us down about, uh, 52,000 to close out the year. Uh, as with all transportation projects over the next couple of years, you'll see a declaration of official intent to reimburse. And this has to do with the 27 transportation bonds, the 2017 transportation bonds. And what we're trying to do here is accumulate as much cost as we can, uh, to allow us to draw down or to issue uh, on these transportation bonds, so thus far this year, our resurfacing, um, we have about 964,000 in total resurfacing this year, so if you remember back to last year's, uh, budget discussions, we had that about 800, 900,000 dollar uh, need every year to keep up with our, uh, road maintenance, so as you can see this year, we have hit that number. Uh, so 42% of that has come through Powell Bill funding, 36% through our transportation bond paving project that we did in the fall, and then this spring paving project would represent about 22% of that number. Um, now what this declaration, uh, of intent to reimburse allows us to do is, uh, next year, when, if we want to issue these bonds, uh, because of market conditions, because of cash flow needs, whatever our, our need may be, we can, uh, bring in these projects and utilize them to do that debt issuance. Um, you only have one opportunity to, uh, include this declaration of intent to reimburse on these projects, it's either before the project or within 60 days of, uh, signing that contract, so this is our opportunity to, uh, to get this included. Um, and if we do include this in our fall issuance of those bonds, then all, all the funding that we have located here and used for this project to fund it right now will be replenished by what we draw down from those bonds, so it'll come right back to Powell Bill, right back to general fund and can be used for additional paving projects in the future. Uh, so that's just a little rundown about what we've planned to do, and I'd be, uh, glad to answer any questions that you may have, and, uh, I'm sure Rob would be as well.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, add on to the end of that, because I had gotten some questions, um, last year, um, from council about a few of the, uh, projects that, that we didn't do. Um, and I'm sure one of the questions you guys are gonna have is, you know, what, where did you come up with the additional money in current year operations? And if you're, you remember last, um, summer, we, we discontinued, uh, the rejuvenator program, which is an Aspen rejuvenator that we just didn't see much return on, I didn't think that was a very, we're getting good value on that. And our, uh, our crack seal program, uh, the equipment, uh, rentals on that, uh, were, were pretty atrocious last year, they were breaking down a lot. So this money was taken from, from those, uh, asphalt maintenance items and just, um, transferred here into a, into a resurfacing program, in addition to, you know, having some of those Powell Bill reserves, we were able to, to make it into a viable project.
So, Ron, Ron Smith here, um, you know, when you, you mentioned that what roads, is there a, a location where the residents could go to pull up if they had questions about which roads or in what order? You know, I don't know your, your forecast, if you have six months, a year, what have you?
Yeah, we, we don't have a, uh, a published list of roads, we, we forecast those out six months ahead of time. We have a, uh, a database. So, you know, we know what a condition is based on some engineering studies. And then we also have our conditions that our crews go out and look at six months ahead of time to make sure those kind of match up. In addition to that, we have to put these, uh, into kind of biddable projects. There may be a portion of a road that is really bad, um, but it would be hard for a contractor to mobilize out and do that 100 feet and then move to another area town and do, you know, a couple hundred feet there, things like that, so we try to hit neighborhoods. And we'll look at last year of resurfacing, the condition rating, our own staff condition rating, and then a budget, um, that you guys set in the spring, so as soon as you guys set a budget here, this year we will then look at our condition ratings and set a, a list for the fall, and, and in particular, um, or I guess traditionally, um, that would be the only, uh, paving we would do for the year. But if we're able to save money and have a spring project, we'd kind of follow that, that same pattern. Uh, once we know what kind of budget we have, we pull those same, um, sets of data together and, and put a project together.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I undertake a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor? Mr. Smith? I have a second?
Second, Troy Selberg.
Any more discussion? All in favor going down the list, Councilman Ron?
Yay.
Councilman Rodney? Councilman Ian? Yay. Councilman Rick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yeah.
Go back to Councilman Rodney?
Yay.
Motion carries. Along with the echo. Alright, we go to action, I don't think we had any, if I'm not mistaken, so, uh, we do not have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Got a motion seconded by Councilman Troy, I'm gonna say all in favor say aye, Mr. Smith, and then Troy second. All in favor say aye, and I trust nobody's saying no, so I'm not even gonna ask. Have a good night, thank you everyone, prepare with us.